The councilors, please raise your right hand. I am a Philippine councillor mandated by law to enact my shores and ordinances that redound to the general welfare of my constituents and repurpose for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service of itself as the guiding principle of my official act, and as I tread the pathways of local legislation, may your mighty guide my mind and heart that I shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
So, once again, welcome to our regular session. Let's have our roll call. Madam Sakatari.
Honorable Arnold Armada, Honorable Carlo Apiado, Honorable Arjen K. Palasiggi, Honorable Ryan Dumaran, Honorable Marie Blight Cartuano Garingo, Honorable Moises Dolar, Honorable Lardine Lama, Honorable Maria Generalin Mihia, Honorable Marie Blight Cartuano Garingo, Honorable Marvin Delanon, Honorable Joffre, Honorable Wellington Puskalo. Honorable Presiding Officer, at this moment, there are six members are present and five members are absent. They are Honorable Lardine Lama, Honorable Maria Generalin Mihia, Honorable Marie Blight Cartuano Garingo, Joffre Durana. So, those who attend your honor is being voted for. For honorable, uh, let's go, uh, as per information from her personality assistance, your honor, will be coming, your honor.
We will just recognize, uh, members who will be coming, but, uh, at this moment, we recognize, uh, six members present. So, we consider all the rest in the meantime as absent. Okay, so with six members present, the corum is declared. Uh, next order of business?
So, we are now on the reading and consideration of the minutes of the previous session. We have the minutes of November 4, 2024.
October, November 4. Any corrections so far?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Honorable Ryan Dumaran is recognized.
Mr. Chair, if there is no more corrections and, uh, corrections of the previous minutes dated November 4, 2024, I move for its adoption.
Okay, so the minutes of our regular session held on November 4, 2024 is hereby approved and adopted.
So, we are now on the privilege hour, your honor.
Okay, so any member would like to render a privileged speech? In the meantime, the presence of Honorable Joffre Durana is recognized. So, there being none, then let's proceed.
We are now on the first reading. First item is letter received from the office of the mayor addressed to the Honorable Vice Mayor requesting for the urgent passing of resolution for the concurrence of the appointment of, um, Mr. Andrew Well K. Palasiggi as municipal administrator.
I think we have already deliberated and decided on this matter. Is this the same letter as we have received before?
No, your honor, this is, uh, different, uh, another letter received from the office of the mayor, which was received by this office last November 5, 2024.
But, uh, is the content the same?
Yes, your honor.
So, it is not in the nature of a motion for reconsideration or something?
No, your honor, it is stated in the letter, your honor, that, uh, they are requesting for, uh, the office is requesting for, uh, request, requesting for reconsideration, your honor.
So, uh, refer this letter to the Committee on Good Government.
Item number two, resolution number 2024 dash 30 of Barangay Kalawag II, interposing objection to the request of JPT Oil Corporation at the National Highway Porok Pagasa II, Kalawag II, Isulan Sultan Kudrat.
Okay, so for our information?
Item number three, resolution number 2024 dash 24 of Barangay Mapantig, seeking permission from the office of the mayor to grant permit to conduct three days cockfighting on November 22, 29, and December 6, 2024.
Uh, refer this to the Committee on Games.
Item number four, endorsement letter received from the office of the mayor forwarded to the secretary to the SB, the letter from Relai Construction. This as regards the official reply, letter of engineer Ademar Palma, structural engineer for the construction of municipal building.
Refer this to the Committee on, uh, zoning and infrastructure.
Item number five, endorsement letter received from the office of the mayor forwarded to the secretary to the SB and the Honorable Vice Mayor, this is as regards the scheduled RALBO, Phase 1 of the rollout of the IAM 2023 edition on November 12 to 14, 2024. Or this is internal audit management, your honor.
Hello, I am an. Okay, so for our, uh, information and, uh, for, but we will, uh, uh, recommend to the committee, the proper committee, Committee on Finance, uh, to attend this, uh, but of course, open to all members to attend.
Item number six, resolution number 2024 dash 40 of Barangay Kalawag II, requesting the provision of tree seedlings and requiring business and commercial establishments to provide materials for tree planting in front of their premises in support of beautification and air pollution control initiatives.
Okay, so, uh, refer this to the Committee on Environment. Uh, we can pass an ordinance, uh, in line with this.
Item number seven, annual budget of Barangay Bual for fiscal year 2025.
Uh, refer this to the Committee on Finance.
Item number eight, annual budget of Barangay Mapantig for fiscal year 2025.
Uh, refer to the Committee on Finance. Also, we, the chair recognizes the presence of Honorable Generalin Mihia.
So, your honor, we have no more items on the first reading, but, uh, we have, uh, still one item, your honor, which is not included in the order of business.
What is that item?
So, this is, uh, Barangay Resolution Number 28 dash 24 of Barangay Kalawag I.
Okay, if there's no objection, uh, that is included, uh, under first reading.
So, this is resolution requesting the Honorable Mayor for the issuance of a permit for the conduct of periyahan from November 5, 2024 to November 30, 2024.
So endorse this to the, uh, Honorable Mayor.
So, we are now on the committee reports, your honor. First to report is the Committee on Finance Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means.
Okay, the chairman is recognized.
Mr. Chair, the, uh, subject of the report is the committee report of the Committee on Finance Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means, Committee Report Number 2024 dash 30, pursuant to the referred annual budgets of this committee, the same were forwarded to the Office of the Municipal Budget for, uh, preliminary review. On November 4, 2024, the office received the review from, uh, the Budget Office addressed to, uh, the members of this august body through this representation, chairperson of the Committee on Finance, Mr. Chair. Items, number one, annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguniang Kapataan of Barangay Kulambog, and the number two, annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of Sangguniang Kapataan of Barangay Tayugo. Findings, as per preliminary review of the aforementioned barangay and, uh, of the Sangguniang Kapataan budgets, reveal substantial compliance with, uh, RA 7160 and its implementing rules and regulations, subject to the following conditions as follows: The annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguniang Kapataan of Barangay Kulambog. The amount allocated for personal services intended for honorarium of SK officials should not be more than 25% of the SK funds. Number two, the provisions of RA 9184 and its implementing rules and regulations in the procurement of the materials for infrastructure projects or civil works, goods, and consulting services, as well as commonly used supplies and materials pursuant to Administrative Order Number 117 shall strictly be adhered to. Capital outlays such as office equipment, IT equipment and softwares, and furnitures and fixtures with cost below 50,000 pesos shall be recorded as semi-expendable property pursuant to commission and audit circular number 2022 dash 04 dated May 31, 2022. For annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguniang Kapataan of Barangay Tayugo, the barangay bids and awards committee will serve as back of the procurement of the Sangguniang Kapataan. The monthly honorarium of the Sangguniang Kapataan members, including the SK treasurer and SK secretary, shall in, shall be in accordance with local budget circular number 148 dated December 23, 2022. Capital outlays such as office equipment, IT equipment and softwares and furnitures and fixtures with cost below 50,000 pesos shall be recorded as semi-expendable property pursuant to commission and audit circular number 2022 dash 04 dated May 31, 2022. It is, uh, recommended, Mr. Chair, that the respective appropriation ordinance of the afforded annual budgets for fiscal year 2025 be declared operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025. Further, it is understood that this review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provisions of law. Finally, the implementation of these annual budgets, compliance with existing accounting, auditing, and other administrative rules and regulations shall properly be observed, and the same shall be the responsibility of the concerned implementing Sangguniang Kapataan officials. Recommendations? Wherefore, premises considered, the committee hereby recommends for the passing of the following measure: Number one, resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguniang Kapataan of Barangay Kulambog involving a total appropriation of 519,381 pesos and 54 centavos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025. And, uh, item number two, resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguniang Kapataan of Barangay Tayugo involving a total appropriation of 366,840 pesos and 80 centavos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025. We further recommend, Mr. Chair, that these measures be deliberated on second reading into this session. Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Finance Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means, Committee Chairperson yours truly, uh, yours truly, Committee Vice Chairperson, Honorable Moises El Dolar, and, uh, Committee Secretary, Honorable Engineer Marvin El Delanon. That would be all for our, uh, committee report, Mr. Chair.
So, any comment, there being none?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of our committee report.
I'm second emotion.
Okay, so this committee report of the Committee on Finance Budget Appropriation and Ways and Means is hereby adopted, and the measures be calendared for second reading this session. Okay, next, uh, committee to report?
Next.
Uh, we recognize the presence of Honorable, uh, Marie Blight Cartuano Garingo.
So, next committee to report is the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Ordinances.
Okay, so the chairman is recognized.
Thank you to the Presiding, um, officer, our Honorable Vice Mayor. Good morning as well to the rest of the members of the Sangguniang Bayan of Isulan. This is the fourth committee report of the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Ordinances regarding two matters. The first is Resolution Number 43 Series of 2024 of Barangay Kenram, a resolution strictly implementing the no-credential, no-issuance of cattle transport policy and prohibiting the acceptance of blotter of complaints of lost animals without credentials. And the second mesh, and then the second item is with respect to the endorsement received coming from the office of the mayor, forwarded to our Honorable Secretary to the Sangguniang Bayan with respect to the letter from the Office of the Punong Barangay of Lagilayan regarding Executive Order Number 8 and 9 Series of 2024. Pursuant to the referred matters to this committee, the commi, the committee, the committee dispensed with the holding of a committee hearing considering that the same could be addressed without the need of such proceedings. Here are the findings of the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Ordinances. On item number one, with respect to Resolution Number 43 Series of 2024 of Barangay Kenram, a resolution strictly implementing the no-credential, no-issuance of cattle transport policy and prohibiting the acceptance of blotter of complaints of lost animals without credentials. As provided for under Resolution Number 43 Series of 2024 of Barangay Kenram, the barangay Council of Kenram recognizes the importance of proper documentation in the transport of cattle to prevent theft and ensure the safe and, is it the safety and legality of livestock movement. The no-credential, no-issuance of cattle transport policy aims to enforce strict compliance with existing regulations requiring proper credentials for the transport of cattle. The barangay council of Kenram deems necessary to prohibit the acceptance of blotter or complaints regarding lost animals unless proper credentials are presented to maintain order and ensure accountability. The com, the committee, after perusal of said resolution, finds the same as compelling or obligatory. In a legislative context, a resolution is a motion adopted by a legislative body to express an opinion or purpose on a specific topic. Resolutions are temporary and not intended to become laws. They are often used to deal with special matters that don't affect the general public. On the other hand, an ordinance is a local law that establishes rules for a local government or regulates public activity in a community. Ordinances are generally considered permanent and can only be amended by enacting a new ordinance. Further, the barangay could aid its constituents in the proper documentation of their cattle as provided for under Chapter 12 of the Code of General Ordinances, particularly Article B on registration and transfer of large cattle. For the barangay council of Kenram to have a mandatory and permanent policy of the no-credential, no-issuance of cattle transport policy, it is better to, for them to enact a barangay ordinance for the purpose in order to have a detailed law, rules, and regulations on the matter, and at the same time, the barangay could impose penalties to violators thereof. Hence, this is the recommendation of the committee. On item number two, regarding the endorsement received from the office of the mayor with respect to the Executive Order Number 8 and 9 Series of 2024 of the Office of the Punong Barangay of Lagilayan, here are the findings of the committee. The endorsement letter was received by this office on September 6, 2024, attaching therewith the two executive orders coming from barangay Lagilayan. The succeeding paragraphs of the endorsement letter states a connotation for the secretary of the Sangguniang Bayan to review these executive orders for further perusal. During the regular session of the Sangguniang held on September 9, 2024, this matter was referred to the committee, to, on the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Ordinances, while the referral was eventually received by the committee on September 17, 2024. For clarity, the following are the executive orders of barangay Lagilayan. A, Executive Order Number 8, Series of 2024, an executive order disallowing the use of helmet, face mask, and bonnet within the territorial jurisdiction of barangay Lagilayan, Isulan Sultan Kudrat. And the second one is Executive Order Number 9, Series of 2024, an executive order establishing a barangay peacekeeping action team or BIPAT outpost at Porok 7, Lagilayan, Isulan Sultan Kudrat. This committee took cognizance of the rationale behind the issuance of EO's nine, number eight and nine, is to ensure the safety, security, and well-being of its residents and the general public within the barangay. As provided in Executive Order Number 8, the barangay council of Lagilayan has determined that the prohibition of helmet, face mask, and bonnet within the territorial jurisdiction of the barangay will help in the prevention of crimes and contrib, and contribute to the maintenance of peace and order thereat. Pursuant to Section 447, Subparagraph A, Number 1, and Subparagraph, Letter I, of RA 7160, otherwise known as the Local Government Code, this committee likewise has determined that these executive orders issued by the punong barangay are within the scope of the prescribed powers of the punong barangay as provided for under Chapter 3, Section 389 of the same code. Moreover, the referral contains a directive which provides that the committee is requested to act on the matter and schedule a committee report within the period of 30 days from the receipt of the referral pursuant to Section 31 of the IRR of, uh, the Internal Rules of Procedure, rather, of the Sangguniang Bayan of Isulan. Consequently, counting from the receipt of the referral, which was September 17, 2024 up to this date, more than 30 days have already elapsed, and the said executive orders were not acted upon, thus the provision of law shall strictly apply. It could also be noted that the municipal mayor um, has, that the municipal mayors have mandates to review executive orders promulgated by the punong barangay within his or her jurisdiction as provided by Section 30 of RA 7160. It says there in, in the particular provision that, quote unquote, "The city or municipal mayor shall review all executive orders promulgated by the punong barangay within his jurisdiction." Copies of such orders shall be forwarded to the municipal mayor as the case may be within three days from their issuance. In all instances of review, the local chief executive concern shall ensure, shall ensure, rather, that such executive orders are within the powers granted by law and in conformity with municipal ordinances. Recommendation, wherefore premises considered, the committee recommends passing a resolution declaring EO numbers eight and nine, Series of 2024 of barangay Lagilayan, valid and consistent with law, subject to the compliance of all pertinent provisions of the Local Government Code of 1991, respectfully submitted by the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Ordinances with this representation as the chairperson, Honorable Maria Generalin N. Mihia, Committee Vice Chairperson, and Honorable Carlo F. Apiado, MPA Committee Secretary. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the first, uh, item of the, of your report, Honorable Blight, is the ordinance from barangay Kenram?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
The subject.
It's a resolution only, Mr. Chair.
Only a resolution?
Yes, that's why in the committee report, we recommended for the barangay government to enact a
An ordinance.
A more detailed ordinance on the matter so that they could also provide, uh, penalties for violations thereof. But apparently, the resolution is not in violation of any existing law or, or local ordinances, hence, it is a valid opinion or an expression of opinion of the barangay council.
The subject of the resolution is no-credential, no-issuance of cattle transport policy?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And prohibiting the acceptance of blotter of complaints of lost animals with, uh, okay, without credentials, okay? Uh, keng usual ginoobra, kung may sa kredensyal, pakita na lang siya blotter nga, nagpa-blatter siya kanadula, eh, kredensyal, okay? Pero tama, huh? It should be in the form of an ordinance. See? So, the second item is the, this time is an executive order from barangay Lagilayan. And the subject of the executive order is, uh... And the subject of the executive order is, uh...
There are two executive orders, Mr. Chair. The first one is EO Number Eight, disallowing the use of helmet, face mask and bonnet within Lagilayan. And another EO, EO Number Nine, establishing a BIPAT outpost, um, in Puruk 7 Lagilayan.
Okay, so... Your recommendation is they are all valid?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so use of helmet uh, while traveling within Lagilayan? No? Hindi man siya sa highway. Kung highway, syempre dapat nakahelmet man ang nakamotor. Okay, within the territorial jurisdiction of barangay Lagilayan. Okay, so in connection with your, uh, item, the, of the second item of your committee report, you're, you recommended for us to, for this body, to pass a resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Honorable, uh, Moises Dalar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to each and everyone. So, uh, I would like to ask on the first item, Mr. Chair, if, uh, do you have any, uh, existing laws or, uh, ordinances on, uh, uh, no transport, uh, no, uh, permit, no transport cattle? Do maya nakita's na existing siguro, Mr. Chair, nga, uh, kuwan, uh, ordinance?
You're referring to a municipal ordinance?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair.
Our municipal ordinance? Can we, uh, inquire from our secretariat?
Kasi stick to man ang sa highway, stick to man sila. No credensyal, no issuance. No credensyal, no transport.
Okay, so in the meantime, the presence of Honorable Darlin La Ma is recognized.
Owners of large cattle.
Owners of large cattle are hereby required to register his ownership or transfer of ownership thereof with the office of the municipal treasurer and pay the corresponding fees being imposed under existing tax ordinances. Administrative provision, the owner, uh, wala'ta provision on transport. Uh, registration lang. So, Honorable Dalar, wala'ta ordinance in connection with the requirement to transport large cattle?
So, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you for, I have observed that, uh,
Mr. Chair.
Uh, in, uh, checkpoints, oh, there are so many times that, uh, when they transported, uh, cattle, so, uh, the the army or the checkpoint itself, uh, ginasitan nila ang, uh, mga, wala, no credensyal, no, uh, travel policy.
Travel, man, o, gina- Sa checkpoint, amogyapo nila policy?
Amo ang policy nila, so siguro, Mr. Chair, maghimok kita siguro sina ang policy.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Marvin Dalaran?
Actually, the transfer or the transport permit required credensyal because of the ownership. If, if there is no credensyal, the barangay captain will certify that the owner of that, uh, cattle is that person and all the responsibility if that is, uh, maybe from, from someone else, it is all the responsibility of the barangay captain. That's why maybe, uh, Canram, uh, will not allow it.
Oh, the, uh, on the part of barangay Canram, uh, they have, uh, uh, that's why the committee recommended that he should pass an ordinance, uh, on that matter. Pero kita man sa municipal level dapat, uh, actually dapat mayaarak man kita, uh... Okay, so, uh, just call the attention of the proper committee, uh... Could be Committee on Economic Enterprise?
Trade Industry.
Ah, yes, no? Trade and Industry, uh... This could mean additional revenue, uh, uh, if we could pass this type of, uh, ordinance. Okay, so, any more comment to the recommendation of the uh, Committee on Laws, Rules and Ordinances? Uh, yes, Honorable Blight?
Mr. Chairman, just for the information of everyone, the, um, Code of General Ordinances is being redrafted or updated by our office. It's pending before the Committee on Laws, Rules and Ordinances, but apparently our, um... secretary is, uh, also, ano, plagued with voluminous work, workload, so...
Uh, you mean?
Hopefully, we can accomplish that within the year, Mamra.
And, uh...
Before, at least before the end of the first quarter next year, Mamra, okay?
Okay, so, Honorable Blight, uh, that's a good, uh, recommendation, uh, that we will be...
It was already referred, sir, to-
Uh, to your committee, so...
To the, the, ano, the amendment of the Code of General Ordinances, but apparently it's a very voluminous work for our secretary because it will entail the compilation of about 13 years' worth of ordinances.
Okay, and in case if you could come up with that amendment, you will include this, uh, uh, provision or this situation?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so if, uh, are there comments to the report? If there is none?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if there is nothing else, I move for the adoption of Committee Report Number Four of the Committee on Laws, Rules and Ordinances.
Okay, so the committee report of the Committee on Laws, Rules and Ordinances is hereby adopted and the measure recommended is calendared for second reading this session. Next, uh, committee to report.
So, there are no more committee reports, Your Honor?
Okay, so let's proceed to the next, uh...
So, we are now on, um, order of, under business of the day and their second reading. So, we have the proposed measures based on the committee report of the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means.
So, the chairman, Honorable Carlo Piado is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguyang Kabataan of barangay Columbog involving a total appropriation of 519,381 pesos and 54 centavos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025.
Okay, so the, uh, the resolution declaring the annual budget, uh, for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguyang Kabataan of barangay Columbog uh, involving the amount of 519,381, uh, to be operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution, passing of resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguyang Kabataan of barangay Tayugo involving a total appropriation of 366,840 pesos and 80 centavos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025.
Okay, so the resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguyang Kabataan of barangay Tayugo in the total sum of 366,840 operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025 as approved.
So, next on second reading, Your Honor, is based on the committee report of the Committee on Laws, Rules and Ordinances.
Okay, so Honorable Blight Cartuano Garingo is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, without much ado, I move for the passing of a resolution declaring executive orders, num- executive order numbers Eight and Nine Series of 2024 of barangay Lagilayan valid and consistent with the law, subject to the compliance of all pertinent provisions of the Local Government Code of 1991.
Second, okay, so the resolution declaring, uh, executive order number Eight and Nine of barangay Lagilayan to be valid and consistent with law, uh, is hereby approved.
So, we have no more items on, on second reading, Your Honor. We will proceed now and we have already exhausted the items in the order business. But however, Your Honor, we have still, we have, uh, uh, just received, um, some uh, communication, Your Honor, which I think this are, uh, vital or important, Your Honor.
The communi- uh, sige, what are those communications?
So first, we have this, uh, PCL Year End Assembly on December 3 to 5, 2024 at the World Trade Center Pasay City Metro Manila. So, the registration fee is 90,000 pesos.
Okay, so, we consider that as part of our first reading for our information.
So, another, Your Honor, is, uh, an endorsement from the office of the mayor, this is... So, this is from the National President of the Plises, Your Honor.
National President?
Of the Philippine League of Secretaries to the Sanggunian. So, may I read this, Your Honor? Only the salient, uh... The salient features of this letter, Your Honor. So, this is... So, the Plises, uh, Incorporated is pleased to invite the Sanggunian secretary and, uh, Sangguyang Bayan members, the Honorable Vice Mayor, to become part of the Plises awarding cer- ceremony in conjunction with the Term and Conference Come Seminar on November 12 to 15, 2024, General Santos City, Philippines.
12 to 15?
Yes, Your Honor. Please be advised that the awardee shall wear barong or filipiniana during the awarding ceremony on November 13, 2024 at 6 o'clock in the evening. So, being the awardee as the first, uh... We have garnered the first in the local legislative award for the province and fourth sa region, fourth, third, third runner-up sa region, we will be awarded by the national places. So, this is a national assembly of the Philippine League of Secretaries to the Sanggunian, which will be held in KCC Convention Center, General Santos City. So, kung pwede ka mo maka-attend, but uh, kinanglandyapo niya mag, ano, mag, uh, register with a registration fee of 8,000 pesos. And this is leave out, kaya wala naman siya sang, wala nagidkidamdamo ang nag-attend. But, uh, it is our honor and pride niya makita dito nga, Isulan is one of the awardees in the local legislative award. 12 to 15 pero mabayad yapon sang registration fee nga, 8,000 pesos. May, uh, live out siya pero sap, kuwan, siguro? Wala na abisang, ano, wala na abisang, I don't...
Sige, uh... All, uh, members are highly recommended to join. Let us witness the awarding of our, uh, SB secretary. Yes, yes. 13, 13.
Ah, 13.
That's a 13?
13, at 6 o'clock in the evening. Oo.
One day event only, it's a one-day awarding?
Oo, one night lang siya. Pero 12 to 15 ang inyo nga, itaos sa, pwede niyo magamit for the whole duration sa ano, but...
Pano kami, may ralbo kami? Wala ang ralbo, di pa saygin mga ralbo, pwede na ba?
Pwede ka mo dito matulog sa...
The, ano, we will prefer the places.
One night lang, naniho?
O, kung matin ka malan sa ralbo, dry ka na sa places, ano eh.
Tayak niyo, may, mayang awardings?
Do, 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 siguro magdubol? The same, almost same, ano siya, 12, 12 to 15? 12 to 14 ang ralbo, 12 to 15 ng ilan, so same, ano, gitsa?
Ay, so yabao kay, ano, kung pwede nga, malakat, takom dito nga, wala sang...
We will just arrange sa...
Uh, uh... Supporta kay, supporta na is sa places, kung sa ralbo ka, kaysa ka lang mag-register, kung sa ralbo ka, dito ka mag-register ka roon. Ang registration fee mo, syempre dito sa ralbo, ay, ma-atto. Pero kung dry ka mag-register sa places, kung dry sa places, ma-atto ang registration mo. Hindi man pwede magdua intrahan mo. Sige, sige, we will attend the Places. November. Pilaganing registration, uh, Mamra? Hila? 8,000 pa, no? Sige, sige, tanawta kung din ta pwede makakuha, uh, ano, pundo. Real line, siguro ganit, tanawta, kung din ang pundo, tang mayarap pa. Sige, sige, next, uh, uh, any other additional item, Madam Sek?
So, we have no more items left, Your Honor.
Okay, so, other matters?
Kung other matters?
Oh, sige. Di, kung, inka, so, i adjourn ta na lang, kung, ano, unawta lang eh sa mga members, yes, Honorable Argent?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, as far as I can remember, last November 4, um, the subject matter about the illegal drug racing was laid on the table and our, um, PNP was supposed to be, uh, present today's, at today's session, Mr. Chair. So, i follow-up ko lang po, if na inform ba ang ating PNP or CSU na to be present at today's session, Mr. Chair?
Oo, Madam Sek, napadalang, wala, wala siguro, no?
So, I am very sorry, Your Honor, for my shortcoming, no, kaya I am, I was on official travel last, uh, week up to Friday, but then nagbalik ko din sa Friday, nalipat ko na po, on travel.
Sige lang, uh, that matter also skipped my mind, kaya, though verbally, nagkumita bi si officer, ano tong nag-attend eh last time, nga, inform niya si OP nga magappear subong. Pero next, for the next session, we will, uh, send a written communication. Any more? If there's none, then, uh, session adjourned. Sige.